Good evening, Garden City. I'd like to call to order the regular city council meeting for Monday, October 20th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. Our first order of business is our opening ceremony, which consists of the National Anthem, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for those service members who have given their lives for this country. Please rise. for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Smith, if you'd take roll call, please.
Mayor Jacobs.
Here.
Mayor Protem Dold.
Here.
Councilmember Hughes.
Show Councilmember Hughes absent and excused.
Councilmember Witt.
Here.
Councilmember King.
Here.
Councilmember Dold.
Here.
Councilmember Carefotis.
Here.
You have a quorum of six.
Okay, thank you. Item four is approval of the agenda.
Mayor.
Councilmember Witt.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Monday, October 20th council meeting agenda as presented.
Support.
And Councilmember Dold.
Carefotis.
Or Carefotis, sorry about that. Comments from table? From public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion passes 6-0. We have no recognitions, no state or county officials. We have a presentation on our brownfield TIF. I would like to introduce Mr. Matt Miller and Kirk from Fishbeck.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We put together an information session for you regarding a brownfield redevelopment plan for the Oren Building, which we're kind of calling Fulkner Building now. And Albert Abbas, who is the owner of the property, is working with Fishbeck. And Kirk Perschbacher is the consultant that's working on kind of the plan that's going forward. So tonight's really just about information and sharing that with you and the public to see exactly what's going on, how a brownfield TIF works, and what we can kind of see on the process and how it's going to kind of all come together with the redevelopment of the property, but how we will see certain things that will be before the council, also the DDA, and also part of the Wayne County Commission through the Wayne County Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. So Kirk's prepared a kind of short presentation that will give us a lot of information. So if you'd like to come up, and then they will project that from downstairs. All right? Thank you.
Mayor, councilmembers, thank you very much. Like Matt mentioned, my name is Kirk Perschbacher. I'm a senior brownfield specialist with Fishbeck. I do brownfields kind of all across the state. My headquarters is over in Grand Rapids. And by myself, I sit on both sides of private development, but also on the municipal side. In my own community, I serve on my own DDA, and I've served on a brownfield authority for about 10 years. So pretty well-versed in brownfields and all the different parts of it. So, perfect. Yeah, so what we have here in the presentation, just want to, we're going to start real quickly with a little bit about the project, and then more into the education about what brownfield, kind of almost like a brownfield 101, and then allow you guys sometimes to ask questions, excuse me, too. So the picture's up on the screen. This shows what the project is conceived to be. This is right at the corner of Middle Belt and Ford. It's a total of five parcels that are going to be combined into one that's going to create quite a bit of housing for the area, too. So if we can advance a slide, that'd be great. Perfect. The goal right now, just very high-level kind of umbrella policy for this is, we're looking at demolishing the three existing structures that are there, putting in a new four-story building that will hold a total of about 63 total units, and that's going to be a mix of studio, one-bedroom and two-bedroom apartments. The total investment right now that the developer's looking at is kind of in the $22 million range. So it's a very transformational project. There's a lot of cost to it. As everyone has seen recently, building costs are going up, land costs are obviously up, building materials. So in order to make a project of this scope happen, there's definitely incentives that are going to be needed. But it also has to be truly a public and private partnership. That's one thing that we always pride ourselves on when we work on brownfield projects, is that what we want, the product that the developer puts together, is something the community wants. If we don't do it that way, we run into issues from the very beginning. So we're trying to kind of fit a model and a need for the community, but also something the developer can afford to make. And when we're looking at the performas, we look at how to make it happen. So if you advanced in the next slide, this is kind of just a general architectural rendering of what the outside of the building could be. This picture is also shown at the Downtown Development Authority, too. And like I mentioned, brownfield incentives are going to be needed to even make this project happen. With the cost to demo the structures, do all the site prep, the infrastructure, build the building, without incentives, this project wouldn't even been feasible in the beginning. And as we get into further in the presentation, this is feasible because of some of the new legislation that was passed in 2013 that allows kind of housing in general to be a brownfield eligible activity. So let's go to the next slide. That's enough about the project. Now into kind of our brownfield 101. And I kind of do these kind of presentations all throughout a lot of communities. So if you have questions, feel free to interject in the middle, otherwise there's a slide at the end. But when it comes to brownfield, what we look at are, what are the different categories that make a project eligible? So blighted, functionally obsolete, and contaminated. Those are the cornerstone of brownfields as they were originally created. Blighted, pretty simple, that's an assessed property that is, utilities are shut off, the windows are torn out. It's just a blighted structure. It's a functionally. And then functionally obsolete goes to a property that can't be really reused in the state it's at for its current use. Contaminated, pretty simple, it has contamination. Under land bank control, that's a different way that property can be eligible. That opens up different incentives for it. Historic resource, contiguous adjacent. The biggest one that we're going to talk about today, and you'll see definitely more in the future, is housing property. So there's two definitions for housing property. So from eligibility, any property that has at least one unit of housing, whether it's rental or for sale, is eligible for brownfield resources. Now, in addition to that, if you do affordable housing, which is, and we'll talk about this a little bit later, but affordability is 80 to 120% of the area mean income. And if you do at least one unit in that range, it opens up different incentives and different eligibility categories for that community. And a community like Garden City, that is extremely important. And I deal with that in some of my own communities, too. So we'll go to the next slide. So in traditional brownfields, this is like we talked about with blighted, functionally obsolete, contaminated, historic resource, demolition, and environmental activities are always eligible. Those are eligible across the state, no matter what. What we run into is, there's a certain set of communities in the state that was put in legislation that are called core communities. And core communities are allowed to access public infrastructure improvements and site preparation costs. So if you're in a core community, those are added in addition to the environmental and demolition. Now, Garden City is not considered a core community. Same with my community of City of Hudsonville, which I think is extremely unfortunate, because from a traditional brownfield standpoint, you could not access the reimbursement for site prep or for public infrastructure because you weren't in a core community. And the only way to do that was this land bank control, but there's a lot of people that don't like flipping things in and out of the land bank. But one thing that the affordable housing and housing legislation allowed is, if you are able to keep at least one unit in this 80 to 120% AMI range, that essentially opens up the core community status for any community, which I can tell you in the City of Hudsonville where I live, and I serve on the DDA, it's made incredible difference to a lot of projects. We've already approved three housing projects, because what's getting them over the hump is that public infrastructure improvement and site prep. A little bit into gap, but really that's the hindrance. And in West Michigan, we've run into it where we had a small community wanting to build a housing mixed-use structure, but stormwater couldn't accommodate the new use. But this was before the housing legislation was allowed, and it killed the whole project because the community couldn't afford to upgrade the stormwater system, and the developer couldn't if they didn't get reimbursed. So what this does is it allows the community to access additional resources. And the way to do that is this 80 to 120% AMI range. And we're going to talk a little bit more about that as we continue. But as we start talking affordable housing, there's a lot of misconceptions with that word, and we'll kind of curb that as we get further, too. So next slide, please, would be great. So the basis of how TIF works, and I'm sure you're probably well aware, but we'll keep it simple. Essentially, nobody loses taxes. That is the number one rule with brownfield. If you were to approve a brownfield plan, each municipality, each village gets the same amount as when the plan was approved, that same year. So no one loses taxes. What they're doing is the gain in the taxable value, and the taxes generated off of that is reimbursed back to the developer to pay off the activities. So what the community is doing is, they're looking out into the future, saying, "We want this type of product, and we understand we're going to have to defer our tax gain till later." So in this example, let's just say the project generated $1,000 per year in taxes without the development. But then after the development was created, the new taxes generated are $4,000. So the increment, the difference, the delta between those two is that $3,000 per year. So essentially, that $4,000 tax bill, $3,000 would go to the developer, and then $1,000 would go back to all the other villages within the city. So no one's losing taxes, but they're delaying the gain. So that's how I like to phrase it. It's really the mechanism for how that works. And we'll go to the next slide. So here's the number one thing, this is housing TIF, this is what's important. And I talk to a lot of communities about affordable housing. The biggest misconception with affordable housing is that these projects are geared towards the li tax credits, or Section 8-type housing. However, that is not what we're looking for with the legislation that was enacted in 2023. This is more related to what we call the missing middle. So we consider this 80 to 120% AMI area mean income for areas. This is for your teachers, firefighters, police officers, you know, people making in the $50,000, $70,000, $80,000 range. That's what this is geared towards. So the misconception that we hear in a lot of communities is, we don't want to do affordable housing because that's not the type of housing we need in our area. However, it's that missing middle that is just not there. We see it all the time where students right out of college, teachers, they have to live with their parents because they can't afford the housing. That's what we're trying to fill here. So the project we're working on is trying to look at what the needs are of the community, but also allow the developer to access some of the incentives they need to make the project happen. And the way that you do that is with that affordability component. Statutorily, you only need to have one unit be affordable. However, that's really a discussion with the community of what the community wants. When I talk about that public-private relationship, we talk about how many units at certain levels the community wants. And the developer looks to see what they can make work on their rent rolls, and we look at that throughout this whole process. So it's not just a developer coming in saying, "I need all of this," and it's all on me. It's really a conversation back and forth with the community, and also in this case, it's going to be with Wayne County, too, because that's where the brownfield authority is. And what we do to make sure, the other misconception with this housing TIF is that it's just going to make developers rich. It's paying for developments on the backs of the taxpayers, which, when we do these projects, we look at the performa for the entire project. And we use the same kind of criteria that the MEDC, Michigan Economic Development Corporation, uses when they look at their funding. We look at debt service ratios, developer investment return, to make sure that the incentive that is being given to the developer is within this range that MEDC uses for their funding. So that means it's even across the board. Developers aren't getting rich, it's filling the gap. And that's kind of the key with this housing TIF, is how do we bridge that gap to make a project happen? Let me go to the next slide here. Process. A lot of it, unfortunately. So we're starting with just kind of the education component. The brownfield plan is in the works. We're working through all the numbers, through the performa, the different AMI ranges. Eventually, a brownfield plan will be produced for the project. Now, in Garden City, we have multiple approvals that are going to be needed throughout this whole process. The DDA is going to have to approve the brownfield plan, but then also approve to essentially allow the pass-through that they normally would get to go back to the developer. So the first piece is going to be the DDA. Once the DDA signs off on it, then it'll come to your council here for review. If your council determines that the plan meets statute and is what the community wants, then it will go to the Wayne County Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. They're the brownfield authority that is this whole area, because Garden City doesn't have their own. And then the Wayne County Brownfield Authority will review the project, same way you did, have the same conversations, and then if they agree that the project is what the county wants as well, then they'll put a recommendation forth to the Wayne County Commissioners to approve the plan. In between, there is a public hearing that is sent out that Wayne County Brownfield Authority will do. So that means any taxpayer can come to the public hearing and talk in favor or against the project, and the Wayne County Board of Commissioners have the ultimate determination if the plan is approved or not. From that point, then it goes to the State Regulatory Agency of Mishta for this one, because it would be housed. So what I'm trying to get is, there's a lot of different layers to this. The goal with the education at this level is, if Garden City, if your council likes the project, great. It really helps us as we move forward. If there's reservations and the community doesn't want it, it kind of kills it. We don't even go to that point. So that's why we want to just educate about brownfield before we start bringing in the actual numbers and the taxes and everything. So we won't get into the last part of that about how the rents are maintained. But essentially, with the affordable units, the developers are required to submit to the county BRA every year that they're meeting the objectives, however many units they agree to at the certain levels, so that part of their agreement is that they're renting the apartments at the correct amount, the people making the correct amount of money. So that's written into the development and reimbursement agreement. And I went through that really, but I know, obviously, time is money for you guys, too, and I want to be respectful of that. So I want to leave it open at this point. For any questions you guys have, whether it's higher level about the project or brownfield in general, I'm here to help with any questions you guys might have. And I appreciate your time, too.
Counsel?
Mayor.
Councilmember Witt.
Two major ones. So the last line on the previous to last, not the questions page, but at the bottom, it said it's rent controlled only for the time that the TIF exists.
Correct.
So after the TIF is gone, they can skyrocket the prices? I mean, I'd rather it stay.
In theory, yes. So a brownfield plan can last up to 30 years. Now, there's not really many authorities that will approve a 30-year plan. So the incentive is, the affordability component is tied to the incentive. So when the incentive is out, the developer could increase the rates if they wanted to. Now, with that said, when I talk about the 80 to 120% AMI, market rate right now in this area is between 100 and 120%. So what's going to happen is, they're not able to drastically increase them, because vacancy kills projects. So they could, in theory, bring a few of their units up higher, but what that will do, the theory with Mishta is, they want to get as many of these units in this missing middle onboard and built as quick as they can, which will stabilize the market, so you don't have those drastic. It could, but I don't really see that happening because of where market rate is.
Okay. The other one is, with this being in our DDA district, is the brownfield TIF killing what was that area of the DDA TIF?
No. So the DDA would still get what they're getting currently. The DDA isn't losing any money. The DDA is just agreeing that essentially the taxes increased off those will go to the developer. So what the DDA will be, losing isn't the right word, but it's an easier way to explain. They'll be losing that gain for the period of the plan. And then when the plan expires, DDA will get everything with it, too. So it's almost like pulling, you're almost pulling that project out of the DDA capture for the life of the plan, is an easier way to think about it.
Councilmember Carefotis.
So you said some TIFs could last 30 years. I mean, obviously, they don't. What's the average TIF? Like, where you're at?
Yeah, we're going to be shooting, through conversations we've had with Matt and other community members, I don't see this plan extending more than, it's going to be in the 15, 16, 17-year range at its absolute highest. It's really dependent on what the performa needs. So as we look at it right now, if the developer's performa shows that they need 13 years of the incentive, we'll cap the project at 13 years. If they need 15, we'll recommend 15. But once we get above 15 years, is when you're asking a lot of your communities. We understand that. And a lot of times, a project will stabilize well before you get into the 30-year range. So we work on that, and we kind of have that discussion upfront. So I don't, the 15-year range is what's been discussed, plus or minus a few years.
Okay. And then you said 80 to 120%. Do you know what our Wayne County median is?
I have some, I know what the rental rate is for 120, or 100% AMI for a one-bedroom is, let me tell you. I don't have the income with me right now, but I believe 100% is around, it's between $60,000 and $70,000, is I'm pretty sure. But like, for a one-bedroom apartment, 100% AMI is closer to, because 60% AMI is like $1,100 per month. So it's probably $1,300, $1,400 per month is kind of the rental rate. I don't have the income.
Okay. And then you said that you only need one, but how many are they considering?
Well, so what I typically recommend, and I think I mentioned this earlier, is vacancy kills projects. So you never want to lock in all of the units. It's also what the community wants, too. I typically recommend 20, 30% of the units to be in the affordable range. Now, where it fits within that 80 to 120 is more up to the community. In a community that really needs the affordable units, we'll lock in more at a lower rate. So you'll lock in as many units as you can lower. But in a community that doesn't necessarily need the affordability, it may be easier to lock in less units at a higher AMI. So we're going through that process right now. I don't know what the total number will be.
Okay.
It'll be above 10%, but less than 50%.
Okay. So when you say three buildings, you mean all of those buildings? So it's the old hotel, the Fulkner's building, and the DDA, those little ones, all the way to all states?
Yeah, it's just going to be one building, yeah, one new building.
Okay. And it includes green, I saw on the map, that they're going to add stuff in the parking lot, so it's not just?
I believe so, yes. Yeah. So it's going to be taking down all the structures and then building the one L-shaped building.
Okay, thanks.
Further comments, questions?
I have a question.
Councilmember Dold.
Just out of curiosity, what's your estimate for when you'll be bringing the plan to the DDA and the council?
So we're in October. We have We have rough numbers put together right now for what the plan will look like. In addition to that, we're working with, kind of making sure that the site plan is what the community wants, too. I would imagine we'll have a plan prepared, whether it's ready for review by the community within the next month or so. But it can move relatively quickly. So I would, in theory, I would think sometime before end of the year.
Sooner than I thought. So you said you're working with the community to see what they want?
Correct. Yeah, we're working with Matt and then also working with Wayne County about what, because the BRA may have like a certain requirement in their bylaws about what they want to see, too. So we're working on all the different parts. The way we typically do it is, I look to see what the developer needs first. And then, when I approach, you know, Matt with his side, and then also with Wayne County, we have a starting point to say, look, this is where the developer needs. Do we need to go up, lower? And then we can kind of fit in the middle. So that's kind of where we're at right now, is we're working to make sure the performa works. Because if the performa doesn't work, then the project doesn't happen.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mayor?
Councilmember King?
Once it's through the DDA and then in front of us, what's a typical average timeline for the Wayne County portion?
Yeah, so once it goes through Garden City, the biggest part of that is getting on the agendas for the different meetings. So you're looking a one- to two-month period, because it'll be one Brownfield Authority meeting, and then a 10-day notice period for the public hearing, and then the public hearing. So by nature of when the meetings are, it's typically at least a couple of months before the Wayne County Commissioners would have the final say.
All right, thanks.
Any other comments from the table? Okay. Thank you very much, sir.
Yep, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. We have no community events, no communications or petitions. We have two public hearings. First one is on mobile food vending ordinance amendment. And Mr. Smith?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So before you is a proposed amendment to our mobile food ordinance. This is kind of a cumulative effort of the feedback that we received from council at a meeting in August. What I did is, I took the feedback from that meeting and incorporated it into our existing ordinance. I then sent it to representatives from our PD, Fire Department, Ordinance, and Building Departments to see if they had any feedback. And what I've presented here is my recommendation for the proposed amendment. I'll just touch briefly on a couple of the key points. The more substantial changes are the elimination of the 200-foot linear buffer between properties that would be permitted for food trucks if a business served food or beverage. So that 200 feet has been eliminated. We have also increased the site frequency permitted from six days per year to 12 days a year. In our discussions in August, we kind of mentioned, if a business wanted to have a food truck once a month, you know, I kind of went with 12, once a month, as the site frequency for that. What will happen is, a business, food truck would get a license from the clerk's office. It would be an annual fee, annual license that will be good for one year. That just basically gets them access to do business in Garden City. Once they have a location in mind, then they would still have to come back to the clerk's office, let us know where they propose to set up, and the dates that they are looking for. This way, the clerk's office can track site usage, and also to check the site to make sure it doesn't create any undue hazards or safety issues if a property is at bare minimum permitted parking. And they want to put a food truck block in three parking spaces, now that creates a hazard where you no longer have access to the required parking. So it allows us to vet that. Upon valid approval for site usage, the clerk's office will then issue a permit to the operator saying that they have access to this site for these days. If ordinance needs to go out and check to make sure that they've received their license from us, it should be displayed prominently on the side of the truck, right there, that they're permitted to be at this location on these days, to kind of cut down on unauthorized setup. Another thing is, we are changing from the daily permit fee from $25 a day to an annual fee. That's another agenda item that's listed in here. I set the base at 300. In our research, a lot of communities are doing 100, 150, and it kind of grants them access to move throughout the city wherever. We set ours a little bit higher. There are some other communities that are higher than us, but a lot of these are the resort towns on the west side of the state, where they actually do like a $500 fee. It's first come, first served. They're there for the season. So I think a 300 would be a good baseline to see how that works. We've also added an annual fire inspection fee to any food truck operator who applies for a license. Once they turn in their license, and the initial license gets approval, the Fire Department will contact them to schedule a fire inspection. There'll be a $75 fire inspection fee for that. And then we've also added language requiring a grease interceptor, and adding language prohibiting to the disposal of grease into the sewers. There was kind of already a standard, you know, prohibition against that in general, you know, putting things into the sewer that are not permitted. But this just kind of adds an extra layer of protection into the ordinance.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, I will open up the public hearing on the food vending ordinance, mobile food vending ordinance. Anybody wishing to speak on it?
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. I always come, and you guys never do anything for us. The bills are so high, the house...
This is on, this is, excuse me, this is on, just on our food vending ordinance?
I'm sorry?
This is just on our food vending ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? If you want to talk about the taxes, that'll be later on in the meeting.
Oh, later on?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Wait.
This is only on the food vending, mobile food vending ordinance.
Okay, so wait till you guys get done?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else wishing to speak on the mobile food vending ordinance? Last time. Okay, I'll close that public hearing. The next one, Mr. Miller, this is on our 2025 Neighborhood Stabilization Program.
Yes, good evening again, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I did want to make a little correction to the presentation, and I have been talking to him, and it's not just my ideas, so I want to clarify. So we've been using the data that we use with the Mishtha grant that we got for housing readiness. And we had public forums, talking about housing, housing types, all of that. So that was kind of all, I've given them all of that data and all of that research from that. One of the positives I've been kind of proud about is the data that we gave them, then also the data that we found about housing readiness, is that we have a very low vacancy rate, so that we don't have a lot of vacant houses or a lot of vacant apartments, but we still have the ability to build more. So I just wanted to do a little correction. It wasn't just me.
Thank you for that. I wonder, but when he's standing here and he's saying, you know, "community," community to me is the people that live here.
Yes.
And that is what happened when we had those meetings here. So, thank you very much.
Okay, good. I wanted to clarify, so, I mean, hey, if everyone wanted to follow, but I wanted, it'd be a great world. Anyways, so, but that kind of brings us kind of vacancy and housing readiness to the public hearing that's before us tonight. This is our Neighborhood Stabilization Program, and this is a public hearing regarding the sale of our right of first refusal home. We only were given the option for, one, to purchase through the Wayne County Right of First Refusal, which is a tax foreclosure process at Wayne County. This is for the sale of 2061 Inkster to the developer that is going to renovate that, which is called HP Snap. And part of the process, of course, in our ordinances, is that we have a ordinance before us, we have a public hearing, so that we can enter into a contract to sell the property to HP Snap. This house, I was going to take a picture and show you, but you can't see the house from Inkster Road, actually. So it's kind of like, can you see the forest for the trees? It's really quite overgrown. It's the first house south of the veterinary, next to the duplex there, on the southwest quadrant of Ford Road and Inkster. They're proposing, of course, the outside of the house actually looks pretty good, the inside not so much. So, but the plan is, is that if approved, this would go to HP Snap, they would completely renovate the structure, and then also put it for sale for a new resident or family to come and live here in Garden City. So...
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, I will open up the public hearing on our NSP ordinance. Anybody wishing to speak on the NSP? One more time, anybody wishing to speak on the National Neighborhood Stabilization Program? Okay, no comments, I will close that public hearing. Item 11 is our consent agenda.
Mayor?
Councilmember what?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda items A, 1 through 3 as presented.
Support.
Support from Mayor Protem Dold. Comments from the table? From the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Okay, action items. Item one is our mobile food vending ordinance amendment. Motion is in order.
Mayor?
Councilmember what?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposed ordinance amendment of Chapter 111 Food and Drink Regulations, amending sections 111.082 through 111.086 as presented in ordinance 25-008.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Carefotos. Discussion from the table?
Mayor?
Councilmember King?
I guess it's just clarification, there was like three proposed motions for this one. And I'd like to talk about, a little bit about the second one, regarding the generator.
Sure.
Me, too.
The reason I thought the generator would be a good add, is it just puts a responsibility a little bit on the food truck to make sure they're not annoyance to the residents. A lot of our commercial property is pretty close to the residents' homes, and there's easy things they can do to prevent that noise from bothering the residential neighborhood. You can, there's generators that have a muffler system, so it's not as noisy. Placement of the generator can reduce the noise, and even make baffle boxes, that can reduce the noise. So there's some pretty simple things they could do to make sure that the generator's not creating a lot of noise for the residents nearby.
Mayor?
Comments? Councilmember Carefotos?
I also want to talk about the generator. So when we talk about, well, a couple things. The food trucks are only allowed 12 times, right?
That's correct. Yeah, the site, it's not limited. The food truck's not limited, the site is limited. You can only have a food truck on it for 12.
So the business can only have one for 12, but the food truck could be here how many times?
Yeah, if a food truck negotiated business relationships with various sites, the food truck can move around. They would just have to find sites that would host them.
Okay, that's, I was just clarifying, they could be here more than 12 times. So they can be in different places. So you said that other places on the west side are about $500, but other places around here are 100. So how do we come up with making us 300?
Yep. So what I did to set the baseline for 300 was just take our $25 day rate that we have now, with a 12 frequency, multiply 25 times 12, get us to 300. So some food trucks who are here more than 12 days might get a lesser than $25, you know, rate. But you might also have ones that they get the license, they only want to be here a week. So it's kind of, you know, I set it for 300 on there for the fee. Like I said, in my, when we get to that agenda item, council is free if they think there's, you know, a better price point, we can explore that. But that was just my basis for the initial setting it for 300.
That depends on what we do with this item, what the motion is. We'd go into the fee schedule in number three.
Right.
Item three.
I'm just curious, for those other cities that have it at 100, how many times are they allowing them to be there? You're saying they can be there as many times as they want, as long as they find...
Yeah, so like, some like, you know, Westland, like, I know we've seen some in Westland that are almost like permanent fixtures in there now, and that's just their annual fee for it. They set up, they're there, they, we're kind of a unique entity with this ordinance where we have here, where we have, a lot of the cities around have, here's your license for the year, you can set up in perpetuity throughout the year. Others, I know Dearborn Heights was working on fine-tuning their ordinance. The last I was able to find on theirs was they kind of had it set up where it gave them 180 days at a site for theirs.
A long time.
And then there's others. So like I said, we're kind of a unique hybrid in the sense that we, you know, you're paying an annual fee to get access to the city, but it's not kind of wide open, where you can be established as a kind of a permanent fixture on that site.
And what's the fire fee, 75?
75, yeah. Talking with the fire chief, it's the minimum fee is the $75, so we went 75.
I did some research, like Dominic said, considering the different generators. I did see that it said, anything under 60 decibels is considered quiet. And then for, I mean, can we, do you know if most food trucks have something under 50?
I'm not entirely sure. Most of my research in terms of the decibels, like 60 is kind of, an equivalent to 60 is what is classified as general office noise, is the one definition I saw. Where 50 decibels, it was classified as a quiet conversation level. But 60 is kind of the base in terms of standard office environment, you know?
So did we find out what the average food truck has? I mean, do they all have an 80, and they all got to go by a new generator to get here? I mean, do we have any idea?
No, it wouldn't be, I didn't...
I'd like to clarify that a little bit. It's not the noise the generator makes, it's the noise that would be at the property line of the resident. So typically, generators are rated at like about 20 feet. So if it's rated, if it's rated at 20 feet 60 decibels, if it's 50 feet away from, it's going to be even less by the time it gets to the property line.
Right, that's why I'm asking, like, what the average is. Like, if somebody was in the middle of the Kmart lot, and it was 60, there's no houses right there if they're 100 feet away. So that would be very quiet. That's why I was asking, what, did we find out what most food trucks have? I mean, because I wouldn't think that, some of our properties are close to residential, but right now, where food trucks are, they're not that close to residential. I was just curious. All right, that's all.
Okay. Further comments? The only thing I'd like, and I disagreed back when we did it originally with the 200 linear feet rule, but I would like to have some kind of a foot distance from the truck to the property, or the door of a brick and mortar restaurant.
Why?
Why? Because the brick and mortar building is paying full taxes, they're paying for their parking, they're paying for upkeep. Food truck is not. So I disagreed with the 200 linear feet, because if you have a restaurant in a strip mall, you're going from the property line of the strip mall versus the business itself, the restaurant.
So what's your suggestion?
What's that?
What's your suggestion for...
I'd say somewhere between 100 and 200 feet, from the door to wherever they're going to set the food truck up at. I think that would be fair. And I think it would also cut down on having a lot of food trucks in the city. I know, in talking at different meetings with different other mayors, that they are concerned with all the food trucks that have been in their cities. I know I used to come down from Ford Road from Telegraph, and there'd be eight, 10 food trucks on every corner. And we want, if we enact this, we have no way of cutting that down. So we could have a food truck every block, basically, and I don't think that's right either. I think, I'd rather, we can always go back and amend it to allow more, but I think, once you allow them all in, I don't think it's going to be as easy to go back on it, is my opinion.
I'm just being the devil's advocate, so if someone is in a strip mall, and they say, I mean, it's, we're limiting that particular property, we're not limiting the food truck, so we're limiting, so you think that a property, say, in the strip mall right over here, if they have a food truck once a month, that that's going to affect the brick and mortar?
No, if it's just the one there, no.
That's what I'm saying. So we already said, each business or property owner can only have it once a month for 12 months.
12 times a year, correct.
Right. So I don't think, I mean, we... So I, I don't think, I mean, we don't limit other mobile businesses in Garden City at all.
All right, I, now, I'm not aware of too many mobile businesses that we have, but I just, I want a way to not overcrowd the city with the food trucks.
I agree, I don't want to.
I know Westland's been buried with them, Dearborn Heights had a ton of them.
But I think us limiting the, the property is where, where we're limiting the time, because if it's at the mechanic place across the street, and they can only have it once a month, they can only have it once a month. I mean, I don't think that's hurting a brick and mortar next door, you know what I'm saying?
Right, okay.
That's just my.
The frequency.
Yeah, because we're limiting the frequency, so it's not, we're, we're getting away from that. In Westland, that same hamburger truck's been there for 6 months.
Yeah.
I could see how that would hurt a brick and mortar if they wanted hamburgers, but I'm just saying, if we're, I thought we're doing a good job of it by limiting it where it could be 12 times a year.
Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem Dole.
The 200-foot rule was why I brought this forth to council to have this ordinance changed. I'm thinking of one business owner, and I do business with a lot, Orton Inxter. 200-foot, he's got 4 restaurants there, there's no way he can have a truck. He'll be willing to reduce it like 100-foot or less, but it's still a business that is, a lot of them go on to be in brick and mortar. It's a beginner's business. If you've got a good brick and mortar business, nothing's going to interfere with it. Like we said before, put a hot dog food truck in front of Play-Doh's, they're still going to go to Play-Doh's. They're established. The Garden City Cafe, you could put a hamburger truck or steak truck outside there, they're still going to go to Garden City Cafe. It's top-notch, good service, good food, you can't go wrong with either one of them restaurants. So if it's interfering with your business, you're doing something wrong, my opinion.
Okay. Councilmember Carefotos.
When you were talking about feet, and we're, we're talking about not from the property line, from door to door, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, what, what was in there used to be that linear, that was.
Is it the property line before, so it could be just across the street, but yet the other.
The businesses was much further.
Right, was 2,000 feet away.
That's why I say if I go, if you went from the.
Door to door.
Where the truck was going to be set up to the door of the business, I think we'd, we'd still get a lot of businesses.
For sure.
Or a lot of trucks that could come in.
I agree.
And I wouldn't be opposed to 100 feet or something like that, that's, I just, again, I'm, I'm more concerned with overcrowding, and we can always amend it if we find that we're not getting a lot of trucks, but once they're in, we're going to have a, I think, a hard time changing it back to reducing that, that size of the, the trucks coming in.
I agree.
Mayor.
Councilmember King.
I'd like to mention too, I know we talked about once a month, but it could be, since we just limited 12, I don't think there's a limit on how many times a month. It could be 2 a week for 6 weeks.
Right, 12 visits.
12 visits total. And just to, just to clarify, Mr. Smith, when they come and pull the permit, say if somebody pulls a permit in March for a food truck, for them, it's from March to the following March, or is it, are we talking about calendar years?
Correct. No, each, each individual food truck would have their own license expiration date.
Okay.
The, the ordinance, it's basically on the food truck operator that when their year is up to come renew, so like if you come in on March 1st, it's good from March 1st to March 1st. If you come in July, it's July to July, but then they would have to renew, you know, once theirs expired, then they can no longer do business inside Garden City until they renew, or they're subject to operating without a valid mobile food vendor license.
All right, thanks.
And I would say the 12, the 12 times a year does not include community events and stuff, so if they came to Lucky Squirrel, if they came to Music in the Park, Chili Cookoff, that would not count as one of their visits into the city, one of their 12.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
The way I, the way I'm reading this, I understand, so it's not per address necessarily?
Correct.
Okay, so if there is a strip mall, the food truck, it's for the entire strip mall?
Correct.
Not?
Yes, if there, if there are 5 businesses.
4 businesses with 4 addresses, they each can't have a food truck there.
Correct, yeah, so it would have to be, because, and the food truck would have to have permission from the property owner, so if, they'd have to go through, you know, if it's a, a strip mall where there's 5 leased businesses.
Not the businesses necessarily.
They'd have to get it from the property owner, so then if one business is like, wow, I want a food truck, but they are, it would have to be something, they'd have to address it with the property owner.
Okay, and the other thing, I'd like to kind of double back to the generator thing, because I, I would like to see that put in there, because the noise could definitely, if they're up, even, even if they're in the middle of the property, but if they're up closer to a property line where there's residents right behind that, that could be an issue.
Absolutely.
So I, I would like to see the, the, the motion be amended to number 2.
Right now, we have the one motion for, I think it was number 1, but we can, if Councilmember Witt and Councilmember Carefotos want to amend it.
I'm fine with that.
Councilmember Witt.
Yeah, I'm just sitting thinking, because 50 decibels seems really low.
That's at the nearest property line, though, that's not at the truck.
Well, I know, it's still, I mean, I don't have a decibel meter, but I know if I've ever seen one used, a conversation 5 feet in front of me is 50 decibels, like it's.
He compared the 60 decibels to an office space. As I said, when I looked it up, 60 was considered quiet.
Yeah, like I, I'm just sitting thinking that 50 decibels is going to be too low, even at like a 20-foot from the generator.
I mean, I'd be, I would have been fine with 60, I mean, it's not that big of a change.
So we can amend it to 60?
That would be.
Yes, yeah, if, if you're looking to reconsider the, you know, to amend it to option 2, we can make that 60 instead of 50.
But even at that, I think 60 is still too low. I think it would have to be pushing 80 to be like at a normal.
I think most.
Generator runs at 80, you're taking, okay, yeah, 20 feet away, that's where it's going to cut down, but then you think of any people talking near it, like, it's going to add to the decibels, car noise, especially at property lines. You're pushing everything that's going to increase that decibel amount, you're going to make it almost impossible for a food truck to be set up, because if you just put a decibel meter up at the property line, and you're right at Ford Road, every car that drives past is going to hit you and put you up near 80, 100 decibels. So you're making it necessarily impossible for these food trucks to do anything with a decibel limit attached to it.
That's why I asked, like, what are the normal, the research that I saw said the same thing, 60 is considered quiet regardless of whether you're 20 feet away, so they were saying like a regular generator's 80, and we've all had to power out and had your neighbor with their generator next to your bedroom window, I get that, but like Zach said, if someone's on Ford Road and they're right here off.
They'd be measuring all of that also. Can we, can we change it so that it's got to be a certain distance away from the residential property line?
Could.
Would that, I mean, would that be better, or?
I, I mean, if that's what we all, I'm just saying that putting a decibel limit to what it has to be would make it near impossible, but if, I say, is it possible to do something distance from a residential property line?
Well, yeah, that's.
It is possible. I would say if we were looking to, to put that in, I would take that recommendation under consideration. I'd go with option 3 and refer it back to me to make further amendments and bring back.
And bring back.
Just because it would be, you know, we'd have to figure out an acceptable distance away from a residential property line.
I would think if we went with 3, we could probably get some more info from probably our fire chief and police department that does ordinance that uses a decibel meter, and get some more information on it, and bring it back before, so we have basically, I think, a general consensus on what we want, maybe fine tune it.
If I could just add, though, I, I believe that we're getting on the decibel, I, when we put 60, the reality is, is anyone coming out and measuring the.
Exactly.
The decibels at a, at a thing without being complaint driven? So either it's going to be well exceeding our 60, and we have to actually measure that, or we're relying on our other ordinances, which is, you know, breach of peace, you know, loud noise, so we have some other mechanisms that I think would also take place. I, I'm not afraid of a 60 to think that it would limit them, because honestly, I, I, there is, there's no intention with this ordinance, even with this addition, that we're going around with the decibels on the edge of the property, measuring it. It's going to be complaint driven by the people. We do need some enforceability when it comes to those generators, and we know it's a problem. So I feel like council has a pretty solid consensus based on their, their discussions, and, and feel, and feel pretty good about where I feel everyone's moving with this, and I don't think the value you'd get out of going back and researching to go from 60 or 80 would, would have a practical effect on it. I think if we set it at 60 and we find that we're enforcing this unfairly or something, council can easily change it, but I don't believe that'll be the case. I, I've 20-some years of law enforcement, I've never taken a decibel meter out to a property line to determine. It's generally.
Do we need a number then? I mean, can I just say the noise being enforceable by our ordinance of?
I was going to say, what's the breach of peace like decibel?
It would just be, you know, ultimately, I mean, do, putting a number on it does allow us to, if we have a problem with it consistently, to develop that mechanism to measure it and say, yes, this was over 60, and there's a, and it's, you know, 60 is considered a violation of the ordinance, kind of like blood alcohol level. You know, once you hit this place, you're, we don't care whether you could do a backflip, you're, you're considered intoxicated. So it gives us a baseline for that measurement to say, yeah, okay, it's over 60, so yeah, you're in violation, but from a practical standpoint, if it's not loud enough to be heard on the other property or to disturb the good order of the neighborhood, an officer can use his discretion, but if it's a real debate and we have to take it to court, and we're finding this to be a common occurrence, the 60-decibel thing is kind of useful. So I, I think it's okay if we pass it that way with, with the 60, and then adjust if we're finding that these problems are, with, with the generator and the noise becoming more common, but I, I just don't practically see us measuring decibels at these property lines and finding that specific. Either it's too loud or it's not, is generally going to be, and some of that with the, when it comes to, is it too loud, is, is whether the property owner finds it to be too loud, and that's the case with our ordinances anyways. If, if it's, if it's, someone could come to court and testify that it's too loud, a nuisance, then they can come to court and testify that it's a nuisance. You know, most of the time, we'll probably work something out with the mobile food vendor and their generator to defray the sound. There are some mechanisms, you know, you can buy something to surround your air conditioner if your porch is too close to it, that deafens the sound. So there's some affordable mechanisms that I don't think this, a 60-decibel limit would be prohibitive for them to be able to continue to operate. There's some, there's some affordable things they can do. Would they even need to? As long as they're operating in good faith and, and our officers are out there working out solutions, I don't think that'll be a problem.
Just a couple more notes, so provision N in 111.086 does say that no mobile, no mobile food vendor shall conduct business, and one of the things is in a way that interferes within a budding property owner, so it could be, you know, a noise issue with that. Doing some quick research here, generally says food truck generators run between 60 and 85 decibels, unless they use a quieter inverter-style generator, which runs between 50 and 60 decibels, but just my quick research on it is, you know, between 60 and 85 if it's a standard, but that would be at the site where it's operating, so the farther you go, closer.
I guess, Mayor. I just wanted to mention that, I guess my thought was, for the food truck to put this into consideration, not just set up for, you know, throw the generator out there, of course typically they put it behind their trailer, and it's the carburetor or mufflers blowing right at the residence causing nuisance to them. And when I did some research, I saw the same thing, between 60 and 80 is a generator decibels, and I looked a little bit into it, I think it said 55 is considered like a quiet, so I saw, that's why I went with 50, however, I think 60's fine too. I just want, when they're setting up, to put some consideration where the residents are, and not to be a nuisance.
And I, I actually agree with the, having the generator specifically mentioned in the, in the ordinance, having a, a sound level means that, hey, we're putting you on notice to pay attention to these things and be mindful of the neighborhood, and we have some direct enforcement that we can take based on the ordinance itself, so I, I think from a practical standpoint, it's wise to have it in there.
Okay, and then, does anybody object to the 100-foot from door to, a door to the truck?
I mean, it's going to be based on what I amend the motion to, but.
Right.
But just to get a consensus to understand what the motion.
I don't object to that, no. I don't object to that, no.
I'll make a motion to amend the previous motion to approve the proposed ordinance amendment of Chapter 111, Food and Drink Regulations, amending Section 111.082 through 111.086 as presented in ordinance 25-008, with the addition of Section 111.086V stating all generators are auxiliary power units used in connection with a licensed mobile food vending unit, shall be operated and maintained at a level that does not exceed 60 decibels as measured at or beyond the nearest residential property line. Also, with the addition, do I have to add a number in section to it, or?
Yeah, so, but you say you didn't agree to the.
No, I said I agreed.
Okay, I was just making sure.
So would it be?
4?
Be X?
It would be.
Or W, sorry?
No, it's actually going to modify, so it would be, yeah, we would put that in at X, because we took the 200 feet completely out with, when we scrapped the initial N, so you would make it.
U, V, W.
Yeah.
Okay. With addition of Section 111.086W, adding a restriction of 100 feet from the food truck to a brick and mortar restaurant front door.
Support.
Support.
All of these, yeah.
Well, just an amendment, so we add, the motion made by Councilmember Witt, supported by Councilmember Carefotos, discussion, any more discussion on what we just read?
This is V.
Okay, any further discussion on?
No.
We just add, from the public. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Okay, item 2 is our 2025 Neighborhood Stabilization Program Ordinance. Motion is in order.
Mayor.
Councilmember Witt.
Make a motion to approve the 2025 Neighborhood Stabilization Program Ordinance, pound 825-006, for the sale of 2061 Inxter Road to HP Snap LLC for $15,638.36 plus closing costs.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Dole. Comments from table?
Mayor.
Councilmember Witt.
Mr. Miller, does this, when HP Snap finishes the renovation and does go to sell it, it is meant to be sold to a family moving in and not a renter-owned, or?
Rentals.
Rental property, correct? All right, that's why I wanted to make sure.
I believe doesn't the, the, whoever purchases it cannot resell it for a year, just a year, so that's all the control we have for now.
And they do do such a good renovation that it often prices it out of the rental market, which we want.
Okay, further comments from table? From public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Okay, item 3, since we passed item 1, is the city fee schedule for the mobile food vendor permit, and Mr. Smith already went over what he thought, $300, which is basically $25 a day.
Mayor.
Councilmember Dole.
I'd like to motion to amend the city comprehensive fee schedule to include an annual permit fee in the amount of $300 and required mobile food vendor fire inspection fee of $75 as established by Section 111.085 of the Garden, of the City of Garden City Code of Ordinance.
Support.
Carefotos. It's Councilmember Carefotos. Councilmember Carefotis supported. Comments from table?
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Carefotis.
So I don't know if Mr. Smith can answer this or, or Fire Chief. So someone applies for a food truck. Are they just, if they, if they get their, their license or their permit, and they're going to be here 12 times or 100 times, whatever it is, when do they get the inspection? Do they get it before they go out once?
Correct, yes. So the way the ordinance is written is upon receipt of a completed good application that meets clerk's office approval. Once we approve that step of the license application, we then forward that on to the fire department, and then the fire marshal will contact the applicant to schedule the fire inspection. And so they would be inspected before they are...
First place.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Further comments?
Mayor?
Councilmember Witt.
So I just want to make sure with like the fire inspections, because I know at a couple of the more recent events, like, some of the people don't set up as food trucks. They are a tent with a grill or something like that. Do they still need the fire inspection and to set up through?
Well, that, that's not what would be permitted under this food. Like, they would have to be a contained...
Okay.
Food service vehicle. And we wouldn't be able to do like, hey, we just got a canopy tent with a grill that we unloaded off the back of a truck, so.
So it has to be a established...
Correct, yeah. And they would have to have valid licensing through the state, either a special transitory food unit, or I can't remember what the other acronym is. But there's one where they have to return to a commissary each night, and there's one that they don't. But they would, depending on which one they are, they would have to have that license.
Mayor Proton Dolb.
My question was similar. This fire inspection is, is required for a truck or trailer?
So, yeah. So the way it's, the way it works is the ordinance is written for, you know, it is a food unit, you know, operated out of a self-contained closed kitchen, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Further comments from table? From public. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Okay, item four is our annual resolution, long-term maintenance of storm water management system. Mr. Olman, DPW Director.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is an agreement with Wayne County, accepting responsibility for any new construction where their stormwater system enters a county drain. In turn, the private property owner enters, enters into agreement with the city, saying that they will maintain the system. Wayne County does not enter into agreements with private property owners because they have no leverage, but the city does, to make sure they maintain their system. So this is a pass-through agreement. We have an agreement with Wayne County. The private property owner has an agreement with us to maintain their stormwater system.
Okay, thank you. Motion is in order.
Mayor?
Councilmember King.
I move to approve the annual resolution accepting long-term maintenance of storm water management systems.
Support. Or from Mayor Proton Dolb. Comments from table? From the public. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Okay, Brad, while you're here, road salt purchase.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Before you this evening is our annual purchase of road salt. Again, we are purchasing, purchasing this under the state contract. We have ordered 1,400 tons for the winter season. Per the contract, we are required to purchase 80% of this order, but we can also purchase 20% more if needed. This year, price is $60.85 per ton, 4% increase from last year. This purchase, we will be using major and local road funds.
Okay, motion is in order.
Mayor?
Councilmember Dolb.
I motion to approve the 2025-2026 road salt contract with the Detroit Salt Company of Detroit, Michigan, in compliance with the state of Michigan bid in the amount of $102,228.
Support. Or from Councilmember Witt. Discussion, I do have a question for you. Is this more salt than we ordered last year or less? Because I know they're calling for...
I think last year we ordered less because we did not fulfill our order the year prior.
Yes.
If we don't purchase up to 80%, it's not a fine, it's just extra money for storage. So we didn't need, I think we ordered about 1,000 tons last year because we had 4,000 from the year prior, which ended in our favor because the price of salt went up. So the increase was covered, so.
I know they're calling for more snow. We'll see what happens, but, okay, thank you. Further comments from table? From public. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Okay, item six is to call for a public hearing. Motion is in order.
Mayor?
Councilmember Witt.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the attached resolution receiving the special assessment role for the 2024-25 sidewalk program and to call for a public hearing on Monday, December 8th, 2025 at 7:00 PM.
Support. Or from Councilmember King. Any discussion is just on calling the public hearing. Comments from the public. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 6-0. All right, next up, for a little while, it's going to be Fire Chief Randy Keen. And I think you're going to talk on everything all at once, and then we'll go through packets.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you have before you here, you'll see there's, there's quite a few items. In the beginning, it was talked about bid pack one. There'll be two bid packs for this project for the remainder of the station. Bid pack one pretty much will enclose the structure for the weather. So trying to get everything done on the outside so the, the building's sealed in, and then they can continue on the inside without having any other issues. So that's what you have before you tonight. As you'll see in the materials, the plans were all there of what was expected for the, the bid packs. Each one went out by occupation or by contract, which varied upon how many bids we had per, per bid. So I can go in a little bit at each with each one of those rather than going over it as a whole. We did get the bids, had them reviewed with ourselves and the project management company. All but one of those, we, we agree with them on as far as which contractor to select. A few of them, we only had single bids, but the ones that we had multiple bids, there was just one that's, that's the roofing contract. We can discuss that at, at that time if you would like, and kind of why we went different from where the project management company suggested. So, but, starting out, I guess, is the concrete bid.
Do it individually?
No, let's do them all together.
You can talk about the roof if you'd like that.
Talk about it all at once, and then we'll just do each bid separately. And if we have a question on it, we'll call you up and ask you.
I have a question before we actually get to...
Absolutely.
...each individual bid. Five out of eight bids came back with just one company bidding on them. Why...
That is correct.
Okay, is there a reason why we didn't put it back out to bid, which I know we've done in the past to see if we can get additional bids? Or it was just a good bid, good company? So...
We leaned on our project management company, who we've paid to basically be our experts in this area. And, and all but one, we went with their recommendations. So I would say some of the scopes, I'm sorry to interrupt you, some of the scopes were, were smaller. I know that maybe the money doesn't seem so small, but the job itself was smaller. So I think it's, it's difficult to get a lot of contractors to come in for, you know, jobs that may be just a couple of days long. So that was a lot of the interest that they shared with me. The larger ones, you'll see, the larger items, it seemed that we had multiple bids. So I think that that, that played into it a little bit. And a couple of these are, like I said, they're, they're just a smaller job. So I think that affected it more than anything. One of the bids that is in the bid pack did go out to rebid because it was not bid, the bids were not submitted correctly.
Correct.
Two of them were submitted with the carpentry and masonry, where time and materials, because once they open up the project, they're really not sure what they're going to get. So to give them a hard number to see what they would expect for repairs or the cost was, was difficult. So that's why the masonry one you have in here, you see the hourly rate, the vehicle rates, the equipment rates. Those are bet out for time and materials because they don't know what they're going to expect at this point. They have an idea, but they don't, they don't have a solid number.
Councilmember Carefotis?
All this is covered under our grant money?
No, no, I don't believe, believe it. We'll be getting to the point where we'll exceed the amount of grant money that was allotted. We have about 240,000 remaining. Is that correct, Chief?
There's, remaining on the two grants, there's 246,749.
And how much are all these tonight?
I'm sorry?
How much do all these total tonight? I thought it was under that.
Let's see, quick, it's about 425,000.
Thank you.
Ballpark out. It's not exactly number. It's pretty close, though.
You're talking about not knowing for sure. Doesn't the roof kind of go under that too? Because I thought I noticed in the bid pack, it said, once they take the roof off, they need to inspect...
Correct. So the roof part that they take off, the thing they're talking about in there is the metal roofing. It can't be attached, attached to OSB. So if they pull the roofing material up and they see there's OSB plywood, which they, they know there's some, but they don't know how much, they'll have to replace it with regular plywood is why. They know a lot of the structure isn't, is plywood, but they, they're not sure. They do know some of it is OSB. And that's a cost per sheet that they cost to replace that.
Okay, so there could be additional cost?
Correct.
For the roof also, okay.
Correct. They have an estimate, I believe, and they're what they expect, but...
Okay, all right, thanks.
Okay, do we want to go on item seven, which is the concrete?
Or, given these are specific contracts, would, would we need to have an approval, a resolution for each?
Correct, because it is different contracts awarded for different projects with different vendors. I would recommend just do one at a time and issue each one as its own separate motion.
So item seven is on the concrete bid. And motion is in order. Councilmember Dolb.
I motion to award a contractor fire station renovation concrete to Berrien Toes, contracting of Romulus, in the amount not to exceed $75,946.20, in accordance with bid submitted on October 15th, 2025.
Support.
Or from Councilmember Carefotis. Discussion from table? From the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Okay, item eight is for the glazing windows and doors.
Mayor?
Councilmember Witt.
I move to award a contract for the fire station renovation glazing to commercial glass in the amount of $21,481, in accordance with bid submitted on October 15th, 2025.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Carefotis. Discussion from table.
What is the alternate bid?
Sure. We, we requested, just in case, that we didn't know where the bids were going to come in at, not matching some of the windows based on the price, but this one matches the windows. Is that the simplest way to say it, Chief?
Correct. So there, if you look on the north side of the building, the windows are a different color that were installed. So this is just in the likeliness of, if it's there, to be able to replace those windows or get them to be matching is all. So that's why the alternate bid was there. They're there, but we didn't know where everything would come in at. We're like, okay, well, let's see what it would be if, if we're okay on it, so.
Okay.
Further discussion? From the public. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Okay, item nine is the plumbing.
Mayor?
Councilmember Carefotis.
I move to award the contract for the fire station renovation plumbing to Halligan Plumbing of Newport in the Mount, not to exceed 21,500, in accordance with bid submitted on October 15th, 2025.
Support. Or from Mayor Proton Dolb. Discussion from public?
Mayor, can I say though, some of these bids like this and some of the other work, you will see some plumbing work later in bid pack two. This is the rough plumbing to get the lines run under the ground, get things attached, just so we're clear. It's not the, the finished plumbing, so.
That, that all comes in bid number two, right?
Correct. I just wanted to know that this isn't the complete plumbing, before it comes back and says, well, we already paid that.
Okay, discussion from table? From the public. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0.
6-0.
Or 6-0, I'm sorry. Item 10 is our siding and trim.
Mayor?
Councilmember King.
I move to award a contract for fire station renovation siding and trim to Grenon Construction of Pontiac in the Mount, not to exceed 67,852, in accordance with the bid submitted on October 15th, 2025.
Support.
Or from Councilmember Witt. Discussion from table? From the public. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0.
6-0.
I keep thinking, maybe the lines are running 7, I don't know. All right, item 11 is the roofing and roofing gutters.
Mayor?
Councilmember Witt.
Like to make a motion to award the contract for the fire station renovation roofing and gutters to Royal Roofing of Lake Orion, the amount not to exceed $224,640, in accordance with the bid submitted on October 15th, 2025.
Support.
Or from Mayor Proton Dolb. Discussion from table? From the public?
Mayor? I know we talked about, we would discuss this one. So this one, we had the most bids for. We had actually six bids. Royal Roofing was actually the second lowest bid. The lowest bid was, that did meet the parameters of the bid, and they're not, regularly, they don't install the metal roofing. So that's kind of why the lower bid was. This is the only one that we actually kind of differed from our project management company. They actually had a roofing company that came in about $100,000 more. The company that they did, they worked with regularly. This Royal Roofing, they haven't worked with, but they are qualified and checked into them. But the other one, the other company was, they were instrumental. They kind of figured out, helped figure out the skull. They cleaned up the back of the station. They came in and did that stuff. So that's why he recommended them, that he's worked with them regularly, and they helped out tremendously on the back of the project. So, but in the, in the terms of fiscal responsibility, like, it's quite a bit of money, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, further comments from table? From the public. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 6-0.
I do, I have a quick question on that, though. The, the metal roof that's up there, were we using that?
Probably not.
Not, okay.
Correct. So, not to get too much, kind of try to move forward here, but there are two types of roofing up there. One's metal, one's aluminum, or one's steel, one's aluminum. They don't, you shouldn't have those two together. They will corrode. Number one, number two, there's issues with the way that it was installed. The fasteners aren't correct. The underlayment's not correct. There's some things in there that need to be, be redone. So when they pull that up, it'll, it'll be damaged a little bit. So the effectiveness will not be probably sufficient, so.
Okay, buy a new product, okay.
This, this included the cost of material.
Okay.
This bid, so, for the roofing. But the lumber, I know we talked about earlier, that may have to be.
Thank you.
Item 12 is structural steel.
Mayor?
Councilmember Witt.
Like to make a motion to award a contract for fire station renovation structural steel to Nomad Industrial Solutions of LaPire, in an amount not to exceed $6,374, in accordance with the bid submitted on October 15th, 2025.
Support.
Who was that?
Me.
Councilmember Dolb. Discussion from table? From the public. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Item 13, the masonry.
My turn. Mayor?
Councilmember Carefotis.
I move to award a contract for fire station renovation masonry, time and materials to Char Masonry of Commerce Township, in amounts as attached in accordance with the bid submitted on October 15th, 2025.
Support. Or from Councilmember King. Discussion from the table? From the public. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Okay, item 14 is the garage doors.
Mayor?
Councilmember King.
I move to award a contract for fire station garage door relocation to Crawford Door of Yusilani. Yusilani in the Mount not to exceed 11,876 as quoted for scope of work.
Support.
I'm sorry, who's supporting? Councilmember Witt. Discussion from table. From the public.
I would like to note on this, this did not go up to bid. The contractor didn't expect it to be over 10,000 as required for bids. When the first quote came back at the 19,000, that's why he reached out to Crawford Door, who is the company that we use for our service and our installations previously. And it came back at the 11,000, but that's, I want to be clear, is why it did not go up to bid, but this is moving the doors from where they're at to back, so.
Very good. Thank you. Further discussion from table.
Mayor.
Councilmember Carefotos?
One question while we're on this. So, like, 250,000 some dollars is not covered with our grant money. Is that coming out of our general fund?
Yeah. Mayor, council, I discussed this with the treasurer. We're gonna, you know, hopefully, we're having a good, efficient year and we're not hitting our budget, but if we do exceed, or if we come close to where we're supposed to be at budgeted this year, it'll come out of our general fund.
Okay, further discussion?
Mayor.
Councilmember Carefotos?
When are we getting Bid Pack Two?
In the next couple of weeks. So we're trying, their, the intention was, they didn't want to do all this at one time because obviously would be a longer process. By doing this, it allows them to get the building buttoned up. So they actually were in there today doing some other things, some site evaluations for Bid Pack Two, and he said within the next few weeks, we should see that.
And you guys won't have to be in trailers for the winter?
No.
Okay. And, so any idea, like, when this would start and end? Like, do we have a finish date anywhere in the near future?
So they're looking to get this going as fast as possible, number one. After this was done, he's going to get a construction schedule going. Early November is what, what has been discussed, to get started. So, the hard part is, like, until these, you know, like, some of this, obviously, you have to order materials.
Yeah, for sure.
So that, that can be the holdup on some of this stuff. So that, that, the lead time for, like, the roof is the biggest item. He said it's about two to three weeks. So obviously, they could start some things, but.
But maybe we'll be done before the second fire station in Westside?
I sure hope so.
Okay.
I sure am looking, looking forward to get this started again, I'll be honest with you, so.
And finished.
Mayor?
Absolutely. Yeah, more importantly.
Councilmember King.
Just to confirm, Bid Pack Two should complete the fire department?
Correct.
There won't be a Bid Pack Three?
There is not a Bid Pack Three.
Okay.
It was only broken up into two just because of time and weather. That, that's the only reason it was actually broken up into two bid packs. If we were coming through winter and this was starting in the spring, it probably would have came as one, one pack, to be honest with you.
All right. Thanks.
Further comments from table. From the public. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes six-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, item five is the Garden City Goodfellas On Street Sales. Councilmember Dole?
Motion to approve the Garden City Goodfellas request to conduct on-street 2025 Goodfellow Newspaper fundraiser sales on Friday, November 28, Saturday, November 29, and Sunday, November 30, between the hours of 8:00 and 4:00 p.m., 8:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. at the intersections of Ford and Middlebelt, Ford Maryman, Ford Vinoy, and Warren Road and Middlebelt, subject to the receipt of hold harmless agreements from the participants in accordance with the city's policy of on-street sales.
Support. Or from Mayor Protem Dole. Comments from table. From the public. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes six-zero. We have no other business. Item 13 is public comment for non-agenda items. You have three minutes to speak on anything not discussed tonight. Anybody wishing to speak?
Hi, my name is Lauren Anthony. Live on Marquette Street. On behalf of the Garden City, or, sorry, Friends of the Garden City Library, I just wanted to let everybody know we are having our bi-annual, I'm sorry, semi-annual used book sale going on at the library right now at the Maplewood Center. It is going to be, I apologize, I don't have it all memorized, October 20th to the 22nd. So that's going to be today, well, today, I guess, is irrelevant. Tomorrow and Wednesday, it'll be 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Thursday will be 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And Wednesday and Thursday are going to be our bag sale days, where you can, as many books as you can fit in one bag, will be $5. Every additional bag after that will be $1. We do have paper bags available, but if you have your own bag that you want to bring, that will count as well. We do not care how big it is. We don't care if it is one of those Christmas tree storage bags. You can fill it up with as many books as you want, and it will be $5. So thank you all so much, and I hope we can see as many people there as possible.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay, any other public comments? Mr. Jones?
Just a reminder of a couple of events that are coming up. The Halloween Dog Custom Party is on Friday, October 22. The small dog breeds will be, be from 12 to 1, and the large dog breeds will be from 1 to 2. That's at the Radcliffe Center. And the Rotary's Dueling Pianos fundraiser is on Saturday, November 8, also at Radcliffe. Doors open at 6. The show is at 7. Tickets are $25. And there'll be beverages available, live entertainment, raffles.
Okay, thank you. Further, anybody else from the public? Okay, city managers report.
Nothing much tonight, just one minute left in the second half. We're up 14-nothing.
We're up or down?
We're up 14-nothing.
Up 14-nothing, okay.
Sun reports through text, going well.
56, 55, 54.
Okay. Mr. Smith?
Yes, just one thing this evening, because our office has been getting a lot of calls because it's been, the news talks about it and commercials talk about it. Just a reminder to all residents, Garden City does not have an election this year. We get a lot of calls, you know, I didn't get my absentee ballot. When am I going to get one? A couple of years ago, we switched over. So our local elections, because that's what a lot, all these are now, are your local community elections, are in even years to coincide with state and federal elections. So if you didn't get your absentee ballot, you will get one in 2026, but no elections here in Garden City this year.
Yeah, thank you. Mayor Protem Dole?
Yes, I have a couple of things. First, I'd like to put out a thank you for Raphael Washington, Wayne County Sheriff, for his opportunity to let us attend the Wayne County Citizens Academy. We received many of the, we reviewed many of their departments, the K-9 unit, the mountain unit, marine unit, the squat team. We toured the new jail, which is phenomenal, one of the best in the country from what he says.
Not visiting, are you?
No, I, I took a tour. That was enough. Very impressive, though. The faculty is over 1 million square foot and houses men, women, and juveniles. It has its own hospital, along with 26 courtrooms and offices. The class was a five-week-long class, a little short, but very informational. They're being, offering another one pretty soon. And, and they're also hiring immediately. I wanted to thank him for that. I also want to send out a special thanks to our Garden City Fire Department for their pumpkin sales to help assure that no child goes without Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Witt?
We're all nothing tonight.
Councilmember King?
Yes, I have a couple of things. One, I'd like to mention, we partnered with a couple of other communities doing a senior celebration this Wednesday. It starts at, well, I'm not sure of the exact time, but I believe 6. If you're, send me an email if you're interested, or you can text 313-300-1351. It's free to senior to attend. And then also, just want to remind everybody, the trunk of tree is this Thursday, and it'll take place at Radcliffe. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Dole?
I just want to say, while the Citizens Academy with the sheriff's office was interesting because we got to see the horses, our Citizens Academy blew it out of the water. That's all I got.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Carefotos?
I just have a couple of things. One, I was really glad to see the owners of the Folkers Building, AKA Orin's Building, come because a lot of residents have been asking about that, so that was really nice to get some updates. But people want me to ask, what about the Kmart property? Mr. Miller, have we heard anything, like, when they're going to start? Did we find out if his other place is finished yet, or anything?
We know the other place is finished. The owner lives in Canton, but he hasn't reached out. I've reached out a couple of times. We just aren't sure. And, and I, I think possibly, you know, he might be looking to see what happens at Folker, to see how it goes, or, or something. He did attend all of our housing readiness, public sessions, so I think he knows we want housing also as part of a component for that redevelopment, but I'm not sure.
Okay. And then we talked tonight about having fire inspections for the food trucks, but we still don't have fire inspections for all our rentals. And I brought that up twice, and I really, really want to do that. Right now, our building department is just doing that. We're not charging for them, and it's a business, so they should, I think our fire chief said another time that all of the fire alarms that we give out, the majority of them are to rentals because they don't have them. So we need to be doing fire inspections and making these people that are renting, making sure that they're safe. And the last thing is reminding everybody that the thrift store has now moved to Radcliffe, and it opens on Monday, the 27th. Come see it. It's new and shiny with lots of good stuff.
Thank you. I have nothing at this time, so I will accept a motion to go into closed session.
Mayor.
Councilmember Witt?
I'd like to make a motion to move into closed session for the annual city manager performance review of Tim Gibbons, as permitted in accordance with 15.268, Section 8, 1A of the Open Meetings Act, Act 267 of 1976, 1976, at 8:36 p.m.
Support. Support from Mayor Protem Dole. Okay, at this time, we will, or, I'm sorry, all in favor?
It's a roll call vote.
Roll call. Go ahead.
Aye.
Councilmember Witt?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dole?
Aye.
Councilmember Carefotos?
Aye.
Councilmember Dole?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Mayor Jacobs?
Aye. Okay, at this time, we will go, take a recess and go into closed session.[1320.78]
Aye. Okay, at this time, we will go take a recess and go into closed session.
Okay, welcome back. I will take a motion for to go back into open session.
Mayor.
Councilmember Witt.
I'd like to make a motion to return to open session at 10:04 PM.
Support for Mayor Pro Tem Dole. Mr. Smith, if you take role.
Councilmember Witt.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Dole.
Aye.
Councilmember Karafotis.
Aye.
Councilmember Dole.
Aye.
Councilmember, Councilmember King.
Here.
Mayor Jacobs.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we're back in session. Motion on the closed session. It's in order.
Mayor, I move to increase the city manager base salary by 5% and backdated to July 1st, 2025, per his contract.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Witt. Roll call.
Discussion?
Discussion.
Mayor.
Councilmember Karafotis.
I would just like everybody to realize that we are in a rock and a hard
Support from Councilmember Whit. Role call, Mr. Smith.
Discussion?
Discussion.
Mayor?
Councilmember Carefotis.
I would just like everybody to realize that we are in a rock and a hard place here because we want our city manager to be the highest paid employee that we have, and if we don't increase his wages, he will not be the highest paid employee in our city. So, per, let's say, regulations, but what's the word I'm looking for, recommendations for how things are done, your city manager is normally the highest paid, and we did take him at a lower salary than usual when we hired him. So, it's not something that we just said, okay, we're going to give him a raise no matter what. It's to bring him up to where he needs to be compared to other employees.
Okay, further discussion? Okay, Mr. Smith?
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Councilmember Whit.
Aye.
Councilmember Carefotis.
Aye.
Councilmember Dole.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Dole.
Aye.
Mayor Jacobs.
Aye. Motion passes 6-0. And no further business, this meeting is adjourned.